Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and I'm assuming we have no appearances or petitions.
Airport authority, right? Okay.
No, but I would like to point out that that is not a stock photo, that is your airport.
Okay, I didn't even see you put that up there.
Yeah.
They look good.
It does look.
Where all the money was, for the grant money. All right, with no petitions or appearances, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on. You have a page just turned here. To the Seminole Gas Authority, can we have a roll call for this one, Jay?
Larry Church. Tim Poplin. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson. Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda, and appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole Municipal Authority, can we have a roll call, please, Jay?
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church. Chris Anson. John Kramer.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a forum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Did you get that, Jay?
Yes, I did.
All right, roll call.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no appearances or petitions from the audience, moving on to current business, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve the estimate of funds needed totaling $22,481.70 for work completed by wall engineering through December 15th, 2024, under contract number WWTP24010SP.
Steve, just for the, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Steve, just for the folks who are here, maybe don't know what this is for, can you explain what this is going to buy us?
Right, so we are reconstructing a new sewer plant. The wastewater treatment plant was between 30s and 40s vintage, and we had several infractions with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, and it was time, it was time to build a new sewer plant, so we are underway. You can see in the photo up there that that kind of was the kickoff of the project. The, it doesn't do it justice, the pit that has been dug there is, I don't know, 30, 35 feet probably. And how thick is that concrete at the base?
Thirty inches.
Thirty inches of concrete, so it's not going to go anywhere anytime soon. The beauty of the new wastewater treatment plant, as we grow, we'll be able to add modules, so that's, that was key in the way that we selected how we were going to do the reconstruction. Before you, tonight is just an engineering bill for a partial payment of the engineering services.
All right, thank you, sir.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no other agenda items, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving on to the Seminole City Council Meeting, can we have a roll call for this one, Jay?
Tim Poplin. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Larry Church. Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Anson. Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a forum.
All right, if everyone will, we'll stand for the pledge allegiance and the prayer.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and do the prayer proceeding. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we have together to discuss city. We thank you for the town that we live in. God, we ask that you would bless our decisions and our discussions, in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, moving on, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and with no items removed from the consent agenda, and I believe we have no one signing correct. And just as a reminder, if you're wanting to speak to the council specifically about something other than what's on the public hearing, we need you to sign in, take that time to speak, but otherwise, if everyone's here for the public hearing or just here otherwise, we're good. So I just want to make sure we catch anybody that wants to speak specifically on something else, so. Okay? All right. We're going to move on to the public hearing, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the public hearing for input regarding letters that were sent to utility customers who have galvanized pipe water lines, as required by the Department of Environmental Quality and Environmental Protection Agency. We're going to go ahead and turn this over to Steve to kind of give you a scenario of what all this means, so.
Great, thank you. So you probably recall many years ago that Flint, Michigan, had a huge scare and a lot of publicity regarding lead pipes. And that kind of spread nationally. And so the Environmental Protection Agency and kind of passed it through the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, said, hey, we need to have an audit of each water system and try to find out what's going on out there. How big is this problem? Well, I'm happy to report that in Seminole, lead is not an issue in terms of the water supply lines. Through the decades, all of that has been solved. So one of the things that they added more recently is the galvanized pipe. So I want you, everyone should educate themselves, if you've got a galvanized pipe, I encourage you to go to the website that was on the letter, educate yourself and make the decisions for you and your family. But with my, my interpretation of what they have found is that the zinc content in the, in the galvanized pipe can collect some of the lead particles that may have been shed decades before. And as the galvanized pipe begins to deteriorate, it may release lead into your lines. So what we know at this point, next slide. What we know is that on the public side, that we don't have a problem. We do not have lead lines, and the galvanized has all been replaced over time. What we did is we did an audit in areas that we knew were suspect, and even some that weren't. And we found that sometimes on the private side of the meter, there were some galvanized pipe. We found no evidence of lead pipes in those areas, so that is fantastic news. We're, we're one of the few communities, and I should say, the EPA and DEQ are requiring all communities with a water system to do this audit. So you probably have seen some coverage on the news about Oklahoma City and Tulsa and others that are sending these letters out. It's very scary, can be very scary, but in our case, we don't have any lead connections that are going to the private side. So we know that the water is clean going to the meter. The residents that got the letter, those things were on the private side of the meter. And so we are notifying everyone that had, or had evidence that there was probably galvanized pipe on their side of the meter, hey, pay attention and educate yourself. So that's kind of where we're at. Let's go to the next, yeah, so this was released by the EPA, and it frankly is a great slide. If you're concerned about it, you probably want to take a picture of that, it's, or it's on their website. It's, it's very good at explaining the situation, especially in terms of galvanized piping and things like that. So we're just fulfilling the requirement as we've been required to do. And we wanted to have this hearing for the public to be able to ask questions, and we'll answer them as we're able. I think the primary question is, hey, if I have galvanized pipe under my house, how am I going to get it replaced? And the answer is, we don't have a solution, neither does the EPA or DEQ. There's not a fun, funding source that has been identified. I think right now what they're trying to do is just figure out how big is the problem? How, is there, is it small enough that we can fund it, or is it so large that we can't touch it? So that's kind of where we're at. I think we ended up with 263 meters in Seminole that were suspect for galvanized, not lead. So that's where we're at.
Got you. You may have any questions? Go ahead. Go ahead, you can, yeah.
How do you assess whether they're galvanized in someone's private home? What is that process?
So we, we didn't go under their homes, what we're looking at is that connection right at the meter. We can dig out a little bit and find out, hey, what does this look like? Is this, is this galvanized piping, or is it lead? We did not find any leads, thank goodness. So galvanized is our only concern.
Anyone else have any other questions? Go ahead.
Among the homes that tested for the galvanize, is there like any kind of concentration in terms of like location or age of homes? Or are these going to be like people that can't afford the money to take care of it?
Yeah, that, you want to answer to where that was?
Sure.
It was basically the south, my understanding is southwest part of the city.
Primarily southwest, uh huh. And usually the galvanized piping was really in the 60s, some maybe late 50s, but in the 60s. So if your home was constructed during that time, it would probably be suspect for galvanized piping.
So, I don't know, I'm not a plumber, but I don't know, I suspect that maybe you could have a little bit of galvanized from the meter to a certain point, maybe something else after that, I don't know if that.
Yeah.
Is possible, but basically it's on the homeowner to figure that out and get that replaced correctly.
At this point, that is true. Yeah, so just, just to emphasize, the, the presence of galvanized pipe is not, not, shouldn't be an alarm. The alarm would be, hey, was there lead upstream from that that, that may have collected on the zinc in the, in the piping?
Got you. Have any other questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Steve, the, again, I would suspect that the, the majority of this 263 would be in Ward 1. Is that correct?
Probably Ward 2.
Ward 2, more than 1?
Yes.
Okay. So, so for, I got a letter, because my house was built in the 30s, which it's, it's a beautiful old house, and I love it. So my concern is, is that there, the testing for lead, you said that, you know, there's not, the galvanized is not really the concern as much as it could be in the future when there's like lead particles that could get through, the galvanized can kind of help it through. Is there a way, or does the city have any resources for people to test their water?
We do not at this time. That, a lot of the information on the EPA will help guide you on some of the resources that might be available. I can tell you, as smart as Jagger is, you don't have any lead. No, just kidding, just kidding.
Well, and so I wonder if the city, if, if there could be some kind of commitment to, and I know you all are doing it all the time, looking for grants and different things out there that maybe could help people in the future who, you know, do have young kids and do have issues, maybe testing for lead or those type of things. Does the State Department of Health, does anybody know, have resources also?
They do not yet.
Okay.
I'm going to brag on our staff a little bit. We are way ahead of the curve. There are so many communities, we're, we're in with more Oklahoma City and Tulsa in terms of being this far down the road and having this hearing and disclosure letters. So the answer to your question is yes, we're in the front of the line if there is funding that comes down for any type of testing resources or replacement.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, and one last thing is, we're not looking at fining anybody, or anybody's going to have anything.
No, no.
You know, punitive from the city, correct?
I'm sorry, one more time.
So just, just to be clear, so people who got that letter, there's no fines or anything punitive that's going to happen to them if they don't replace their lines?
That, that is true.
Okay.
I think this is more of a notice requirement put out by the federal government to, to get this out and broadcast it, just so people are aware. Because you know, obviously, that we legally can't go in on somebody's private property and use public monies to, you know, fix their water lines if it is the wrong material. So I think this is just, hey, if it's there, be aware of it, and I think you'll probably start even seeing more of this. You know, this gets, if it gets traction a little bit more than it has. But I think that's really what the primary purpose of this is, from the federal government.
I assume that you probably got good enough contact, Steve, that if funding becomes available for this, we'll let people know.
Yes. Again, we'll be in the front of the line.
I appreciate it, thank you.
If I'm being totally transparent, I would tell you that if I'm the federal government, I want to solve the lead first and the galvanized second. So it may not be something that we're going to get immediate attention from, they're going to go to the ones that are in immediate peril.
Sure. Thank you.
But we're going to be asking anyway.
I think that taking the liability off the city and knowing that we don't have any of the lead that could possibly lead to that makes me feel comfortable that it's not on us.
Right.
If something does happen, so. You have another questions, or?
I just saw a water safety event, lead and drinking water test kit on Amazon, $19.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking that up, I appreciate it. All right, anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to current business, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of grant JAG-LE-2024-Seminole. Is that C1 or CL?
CI.
CI, okay. Dash 00091 for $9,223.38 to fund three stalker, two stationary radar systems, iPads, and tough dock cases. What are these four, what are these?
Police.
Police, okay.
Yep. Radar. Yeah, it's, it's a grant.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item two, consideration and possible action to approve acceptance of emergency management performance grant, number EMY-2024-EP-05005 for $10,000 of 50/50 grant match for emergency management operating budget purposes.
It's our annual.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item three, consideration and possible action regarding retaining the services of wall engineering for the design, procurement, construction, inspection, as built, survey, and geotechnical engineering of a water tower near Seminole State College to be funded by a grant appropriated by the Environmental Protection Agency.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item four, consideration and possible action to approve the service agreement with Canadian Valley Electric Cooperative, CBEC, for a hosted phone solution for city facilities at a cost of $1,695 per month in lieu of services from the city's current provider, FluentStream. So I have a couple of questions on this.
And I've got some answers.
Okay.
Through my expert IT guy.
Okay. Part of this will be IT, but my other thing is, are we, I know there was a situation in the past where we kind of had a, where you get charges for pulling out of contracts or service agreements that you currently have. Are we going to have any of that with pulling out of this one? With FluentStream?
No.
Okay.
No, we're going to terminate at the same time, so.
Okay.
You got a slide for him? There you go. So this is something that I asked Sean to put together, and it's, it's, to me, it's the best explanation we can possibly see. So this is the, Sean, take it.
So this kind of shows our current setup to make our phones, our internet network. This is, basically was put together about 10 years ago, that's probably the only option we had at the time to get phone, a phone network to every one side's wastewater treatment, parks, cemetery, things like that. So there's a couple of steps there that we had to go through to make that happen, a couple of different companies that we have to pay to make that happen. That's kind of what that reflects is, FluentStream is basically our phone provider, that's who we pay monthly phone bill. Optimum was the internet service we were using, that Sebeck replaced some months ago. And RSI was the back end data for the phone systems to get to each one of those sites. We're running into a situation, basically the hardware we have, it's in the C, they stopped building physical devices January 2025, this month, I believe. So if our PBX, our server, basically server goes down, there's not a lot of options to replace that. It's been a great system for what we had, it's been rock solid, it's just getting of date age. So we kind of got to start thinking about that. When we've had issues with it, Nobels, who manages that for us, well, we pay them to come out. They do a great job, a little pricey, it takes us some time to get out here. But that's what we're hoping to do with this, is to basically tie it to the internet we have now, Sebeck, simplify it, don't have so many points that's going through that we may have issues with.
So currently, we're spending, what was it, Sharon, 50, 58, $5,846 a month, and we're going to this design.
Yeah, and that's, that number, that 5846 is off by about a thousand, because that doesn't include the Nobels Center and the library for the phones. So it's actually, we're saving more than that, we're paying more than that. I just didn't have it on that slide there. But yeah, so simplify it, that's what the service agreement would be for Sebeck, is that much. I mean, it's a little bit higher than FluentStream, but in the grand scheme of things, we're saving a lot of money. And this kind of ties into the next agenda item.
Yeah. So I have a question, if you go back to the other slide, just so, what's the purpose of, so Optimum was the internet source, what was the purpose of RSI, having to have, because it's almost like having two internet sources.
Yeah, I wasn't on the ground for that, but how I understand it was, that was the best way to get other websites tied together. With, yeah, you basically one citywide network is what that is. And that's how, they, they all come back to, all those phone systems come back to the PD, and then it kind of flows over to the city hall, and that's how it ties them all together, just to have to have a service for each side. You're able to simplify it in a way that works.
I got you. I was just confused why we needed two internet sources to, to run that, so.
Yeah, and they, they also will be working on this eventually, but they carry some of our camera systems like around about and the moving town towers, so I got to find a solution for that, but that's, I'm embarrassed.
So being a Seminole company, are they aware that we're not going to be using them anymore if this goes through? Is that, I mean, I don't know if that causes any friction between, because if they're still going to service the cameras but not the phone system, I just didn't know if that would cause any frictions between, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I'm not approachable about that, I'm just curious.
I just want to say thank you for finding a way to save us money, and then making the really easy to read diagram.
What else? Anybody have any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Sorry.
Corey Crabtree.
abstain.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to approvals and acceptances. Under bids, item five, consideration and possible action to approve the bid of $9,625 from Sebeck for replacement of telephone equipment in city offices as a component of upgrading city phone services. This is a budgeted capital improvement project for the current fiscal year.
Move to approve. Second.
Did you get that, Jay?
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call, please.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item six, consideration and possible action to approve the bid of $88,000 from Lee's Track County Heat and Air LLC for HVAC replacement at the Seminole Community Room and Seminole Public Library under notice of contract award CDBG-CV3-18466CDBGCR20.
Wow.
Well done.
It's got some numbers in there and some letters.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
abstain.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We have an addendum item on here before I forget it. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve the settlement and release agreement in the amount of $61,759.62 with Larson Design Group for certain architectural design and consultation services related to construction of the Family Entertainment Center.
And before you get a, take a vote on this, there's some modifications. I talked to the representative for Larson, I think that was their, they, I had placed them in their agreement as a signature party, you know, to, to, just for the memorandum of record, really, they don't want that. So I'll ask that you give me the ability to, just to modify it with this, in consequential changes, does it affect the substantive provisions in there? Settlement will still remain the same, and we've mutually rescinded the contract, so.
And this is for partial design that they did, correct?
Yes.
The work that they did.
Yes.
The contract's been mutually rescinded a while back, this is just to tie up the loose end. They've not been paid anything, this will take care of everything.
Okay, so this $61,000 is not in addition to payments we already made, this is the whole thing?
Correct, this is the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So the agenda items we have, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members. Do, we'll start at Ward 1, Dana?
Okay, great.
Thank you, welcome to Ward, Ward 1, everyone. Just a couple of things, I, I've only received one constituent issue, and that was actually just last night, from an elder in my ward who is very upset and confused about optimum services in the city. So, what I would like to do, Steve, is get you her information, and if there's any way we can connect her, if we have a contact. The, she was really upset about the rates having increased significantly. And as an elder who is on a fixed income, and who lives on her own, I don't want to give too much of her information, but, you know, she feels that that's to the point where she can't sustain it anymore, and is worried about her safety, and I'm sure she's not the only one. So, you know, I, I love how Canadian Valley comes in here and gives us updates, and I would, you know, anyone who's doing business and is servicing our community, I think we would love to hear from them, and, and possibly accountable for the, the services. I see some heads nodding no, but I would like to make that request to them, that we, we hear from them, and they present to the council, so we can ask these questions if other constituents would like to maybe appear and ask questions.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Thank you, sir. Another thing is, I just want to point out some, some kudos and some just gratitude towards, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, is it Mama's Christ Van that is taking care of our indigent population, especially during the cold spell, they have warming stations and are letting people stay there overnight and feeding them. That's just such a blessing in our community, and I just wanted to, to give them some, some thank you, because it's just, it's needed. And when I drive around town and I'm seeing more people out in the cold, it really does concern me. So kind of moving along those lines, and I don't have my phones, I left my phone at my house and drove away from it for the first time in about 10 years, so you guys are, I'm freaking out right now. So, Steve, who hosted the Thanksgiving dinner? What group is that, Terrace group?
Yep, that was Impact Seminole.
Impact Seminole, so I want to, again, just, man, some, some gratitude and thank you for Impact Seminole, which is just a group of citizens who, they're not funded in any way, it's just out of the generosity of their hearts, and the love of their community, that they, they hosted a Thanksgiving dinner and a Christmas event where they fed people and, for free, it was open to the public. And the, I actually got to go to Thanksgiving dinner and, and see that there was quite a few people, a lot, coming in and getting their free meal, which really kind of just, again, points to, one, the gratitude. I'm glad that someone is there in our community to take care of that need. But it, again, got me thinking more along the lines of food insecurity in our community, and what can we do about that? We're only as good as, you know, the least of us, who have the least, right? So, just, just kind of an update for everyone, we pulled together, and I say we, it was really just kind of a, and just an idea and a thought, and reached out to Steve, and Steve got the ball rolling, so thank you, Steve, for that. And the discussion of food insecurity, and how can we address that on a, on an ongoing basis, not just during the holidays, which is great, but on a, on an ongoing basis. And so we pulled together this, this group of folks to look at the possibility of having a community food bank that is not only going to give folks the, the opportunity to have food and nutrition in their home, but also look at services that are needed for, you know, just being, being able to thrive. So, you know, looking at, you know, we could put other services in there that they can access, like, you know, education, housing, utilities, just different things. It's, it's honestly, right now, it's kind of a pie in the sky, but man, we've already got somebody who is committed to our first donation, a very big donation to get us going. And it's just, again, it just really speaks to our community, our people are awesome in Seminole, and I'm very proud of our town, and I can't wait to visit with you all again and give you some more updates as we move further along. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to Ward 2, John Kramer. Alright, Eddie Foreman?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'm so pleased so many people show up for public forums and pay attention to what's going on in the city. I wish, would make people aware that there's a bill proposed by Senator Standrich out of Norman that would limit every town of less than 300,000 could not address living spaces for the homeless. You could not give any public land or any public funds to work on that issue. It seems to be, you know, it's a direct thing to what they've had in Norman, but it would impact every community except Tulsa and Oklahoma City. It would be the only 2 communities to have been public funds on the homeless, and goes to Dana's thing. So, I hope that you're all aware of that and pay attention to that, is whether it gets out of the committee or not, but it's a, it's just a strange piece of legislation in my mind. Yeah, I'm, sorry.
Alright. The only other one we have here, Trace Connor.
By the looks of our council tonight, some people are homesick, so just remind everybody to wash their hands and, and take care of their health, stay healthy. Seems that we're gonna have some colder weather coming too, so it might be a three dog night instead of just two dog nights. That's all I got.
Alright, I'll move on and do mine real quick. First off, Happy New Year's, first meeting in the new year, glad to see everybody here. We had a good turnout at the meeting earlier too, so it went really well. Just to remind everybody to stay warm, and I also had on mine the Mama's Christ Van. They are, if you haven't met them, they're some really special people. They, they're to another place that just works off strictly donations and just what people give to them. So, you know, I, I, I like to participate in stuff like that, and we don't always take the time to do that. And so, anybody that wants to participate or make a warm meal for those people or something like that, that would be awesome, just to take off and drop a pot of chili or something, you know, on one of these cold nights, because we've got more weather coming this weekend, so it's gonna be, we're gonna be there, so. But also the city staff for keeping our streets clear, whatever you had to treat them with. I didn't notice any really problems with our city streets. I mean, I don't know if it was the warm weather melted them so fast, or what we did to pre-treat them or treat them in general, but they were good, so. And if you weren't here earlier for the meeting, the, it's pretty exciting to see what downtown's gonna become. Is it a little bit of an inconvenience? Yes, but I think we'll all benefit from that, and so that's pretty exciting. I've had several people reach out about becoming mayor. It's interesting, not something I probably had on my agenda too many years ago. And Steve called me on council some years back and said, hey, I think that they're looking at you for appointment. And I said, that's cool, I said, that's what mayor wants, that's cool. And so, I'm kind of like Tim Pop when I was appointed to be on council. And then when I got on council, I'm like, I'm not sure I did the right thing or not. And then sit on there for a little while, it was really interesting to find that you can really be beneficial to your town, and that you have as much power as you have. Unbeknownst to me at the time, I thought, oh wow, but city government was not probably something on my radar some years back, but I've really enjoyed it, and it's really fun to see the cities grow and work through problems that you get. You know, the sewer plant's one of those, we're gonna continue to have to fight some budget deals on the next couple of years. But it's all been, it's been really great, and so I've enjoyed it. So, thank you to all who have commented, I guess I'm stuck for at least 2 years, you're stuck with me. Been doing this for now about almost a year, I guess, so just in a, in this status of vice mayor and doing this. So, I enjoy it, and thank you guys for support, and just bear with me, because it's a learning process every week, so. But, also stay tuned, because if you know me in my personal life, you know I'm a pretty comical person. Not that I want to turn a council meeting into a comedy show, but I like to have a little bit of fun too. I think you can be so serious that it just becomes, you know. But, just look for some things to happen, it'll be fun, so. And then the other reminder is, we do have an election on February the 11th. For you guys, we will be in council meeting after the election's over by, for next time. So, just a reminder for you guys to get out and vote, so don't forget. That's all I have. Steve?
So, I, I want to offer congratulations to Grandpa, John Kramer. John, congratulations to your grandpa. I think we're all gonna just start calling you grandpa.
Number 6.
Oh wow, congratulations.
Yeah, Scott Rossman, you want to stand up? City council member-elect, so we'll, we'll have him in here pretty soon, so. Maybe get somebody towards the quorum next time, so we'll, we'll be in good standing. Yeah, you mentioned the town hall, just real quick. February 1st, we're expecting the water lines to begin construction downtown. And hopefully, if the weather cooperates and, and all goes well, we should end up with a completed renovated deal downtown by May 23rd. So, it is a quick, pretty quick turnaround, given the scope of the project. I know our guys are excited, and to be able to contribute to the water line upgrades. Aren't you excited? Yeah, okay. Good answer. Yep. Casey, thank you for what she was talking about, helping us trying to get the community food bank up and going. That's, it's a big deal, we need, we need that. The homes at the Sunview Estates near the Roundabout, if you haven't been by there lately, it's, wow, it's remarkable. I, I think we've got, what, 25 pads now, ready to receive homes in, in what used to be just a vacant lot. They're at the old independent tank site, pretty cool to see. The second phase of Milk Phillips, if you haven't been down Milk Phillips today, we are starting the second phase, the traffic cones are up, and we're gonna be doing a little bit more renovation to that. Thank goodness, it's needed, so we're, we're excited about that. Henson Burgers is continuing their construction, that's the new update across from the high school. I don't have an opening date, but we did see them in there putting together walk-in coolers and things like that. We'll be beginning budget discussions, I want to place in front of your mind, you guys be thinking, it may be a slim year, but if you've got priorities that you want to see addressed, I know we're gonna be starting that here pretty quick. Thank you for overcoming the lobbying efforts of Nick Ataya. I know he was lobbying against the police radars, but you guys voted for it, so now we stand to earn a little income off the Ataya family. That's all I have.
I'm not so sure why you're worried about it, I'm the one that gets pulled over in the church parking lot. Of all things, rolling a stop sign in our ward, it is what it is, so. Alright. Yep, Mr. Brad Carter, you got anything you want to add? Alright, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?